Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I, of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a moment of silence? Thank you. First up, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yeah.
Vines.
Here.
Kelwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Alexander.
Present.
Nine present in chambers. Mayor.
Hi, nice to see you all. Welcome to the, welcome back. Thanks for inviting me again. June 10th, 2024. I wanted to update all, everybody. I've decided to post the Chief of Staff position. As you all know, Phil Talon took a job with South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau as a CEO. Today was his first day, actually. So, we're posting a job. I am going through the normal process. Internally, he'll take all bids and then we'll open it up to external candidates. So, for anybody that's watching that's interested, the salary tops out at 155K. I think it's a great launching pad. Previous Chief of Stats have gone out and run the South Shore Convention and Visitors Bureau, the National Headache Foundation, Hammond Water Company, Hammond Sanitary District, ones a Vice President at NIPSCO. It's like my backup quarterback. You work with department heads, you deal with employee discipline, a lot of after-hours work, like this, for instance, a lot of working with the council, a lot of Indianapolis work, required meetings every week, mayor's night out, required after-hours meeting, and you're expected to know the city Hammond very, very well. So, if you know anybody that meets those qualifications, please let them know we have an open job. And I appreciate, I'll go through my activity log, and then I want to cover a couple of action items, if you don't mind. I should be relatively quick. Met with Councilman Rakos and other community leaders from Hessville for an update on Governor's Parkway Bridge, and as well as the Grand Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. I thought we had a great meeting, so I appreciate Councilman Rakos for attending that along with those community leaders. Attended Meet by Lynn's welcoming party. Meet by Lynn's is not officially open yet, but they did host a welcoming party. I know a number of council people were there, along with Economic Development Staff that's in the Second District. Congratulations, Councilman Salinas, of brand-new $50 million facilities opening up, hundreds of new jobs, great new tax base for our city. Obviously, the unions have been building it. It's just a great project altogether right there on Hoffman Street. It's literally, obviously, it's mostly freezers. It was sort of shocking to see it, you know, going in freezers and get well below zero. Pretty impressive facility. So, congratulations to the Second District. Met with my staff to finalize plans for the presentation we gave to you all in regards to the food and beverage tax. You have that. Promoted Battalion Chief Danny Diambala to become Hammond Fire Department's newest Drill Master. The Drill Master holds the rank of Assistant Chief, so Dan, who was promoted from Battalion Chief to Assistant Chief, and Drill Master is responsible for basically training all of our Hammond firefighters. So, congratulations to Dan on his promotion. Attended former Fire Chief Jeff Smith's retirement ceremony. Jeff had a 32-year career with the Hammond Fire Department, but the day after his retirement ceremony, I promoted Hammond's former Fire Chief Jeff Smith to become Hammond's newest department head for the Hammond Port Authority. Anybody that knows the former chief knows he's a Robert Sale guy, previously served on Hammond Port Authority Board. I thought he was the perfect person to take over when Mylan moved to the Hammond Sanitary District. So, Jeff's fully in charge of that now. It seems like we're starting to get everybody in place again after a lot of movement. Hammond Fire Department started negotiations with the city. We had a really good first meeting. I want to thank Mike Hall and his team for a good start. As everybody knows, first responders are looking for significant pay raises. I think it's safe to say. They're talking 15%, 20% range. So, that's what I'm dealing with. If you guys have more particular questions, I have no problem answering them. Met with Tom Dockich, who's worked with us with the Hammond Data Center about some infrastructure issues we have up there at the Hammond Data Center. Caught up with Councilwoman Vines over multiple issues. I appreciate her coming into mayor's office and meeting with me. Attended my monthly police captain's meeting at the Hammond Police Department along with my Chief of Stat, well, excuse me, corporate counsel and my city controller. Held interviews with multiple employees interested in working in Hammond's mayor's office administrative assistant position. We promoted somebody today, actually, from the Police Department, Noemi Garcia, to be our next administrative assistant in the mayor's office. It feels like I'm getting my feet on the ground in the mayor's office as well. So, everything except for the Chief of Staff. And last but not least, attended Hessville Little League's Home Run Derby in the Sixth District. Really cool event. I appreciate being invited out, and I hit a home run, which is nice.
On 173rd, I hope.
I couldn't walk the next day, but I did hit a home run on the day before that. Action I did before the council. I know you have your packet before you on the food and beverage tax. I want to remind the public that we are required to do one public meeting, which I imagine you're going to schedule today. That has to be completely separate outside of third and final reading. So, tonight, we're just introducing this 1% proposal. The two things we want to fund with the 1% is expansion to the sportsplex and the surrounding area, as well as the downtown Hammond train station. I know that's in the packet we provided to you all. In the statute, there's only three projects listed. Those two, plus the pavilion at Wolf Lake. I love the Pav, but I have a feeling those two projects, the downtown train station and the sportsplex expansion will probably take most of the money we have available under this. But presumably, we would also be able to expand the pavilion with the food and beverage money. Two meetings ago, we gave to you a resolution in regard to Franciscan. I know Councilman Salinas was carrying it. We're still asking you to hold off on that, if you don't mind. I know corporate council's working with Franciscan attorneys, and we're going to come up to you all with a final proposal. This is, if we, this is a good thing for us to hold off. Everybody's aware, so I please, just asking you to hold off on that. And last but not least, in the Third District, Swanell Company, right here across the street from City Hall, purchased the old Carpenter's Hall, and they're proposing a Swanell Economic Development Area, Economic Revitalization Area for a proposal that between Erie Street and Highlands Street, they're going to build a brand-new building, basically, and centralize their operations into a bigger building with more jobs and more assessed value. And that's right here in a TIF that's going to help us ultimately develop around City Hall. I think it's a great project. Swanell's been waiting a long time for this. If you have any questions, my staff's available to help you out with that, and I appreciate you. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions for the mayor?
I have a question.
Hi, Councilwoman.
Hi, Mayor. Just really quick, because I didn't get a chance to ask this in caucus. Outside of those projects, could those funds be used for something else other than projects?
No, ma'am. Exactly. Great question. The state statute, the states, to give us this permission, our state is, you know, they don't like taxes. We all know that. Indiana, that's one of the reasons we have such a low tax rate. So, for them to give us permission for this food and beverage tax, it's literally three projects we could use it on. The downtown Hammond train station, the sportsplex, and a pavilion expansion. So, and it's literally written into state law that way. So, I'm glad you asked that. So, if we wanted to help fund the fire department with it, we could not do it. It would be illegal. So...
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We discussed this in caucus, and this was passed by state legislation, and the question was asked by a resident. Well, it's 1%. What prevents it from being 2? And it's simple. It's specific to these three projects at 1%, correct?
Yes, sir. Exactly. It's specific to these three projects, max 1%.
And it sunsets in 20 years?
20 years, from July 1st.
But this is by...
If we don't, by the way, if we don't pass it for two years, we would only have 18 years. So, the clock starts ticking on July 1st. We have 20 years from that date. It's gone, that ability. So, what we're trying to figure out is, if it's, the state's telling us we have $40 million over 20 years, basically, we'll make from this tax. So, we're trying to estimate, because there's going to be financing costs involved, and we feel like we could safely bond $25 million for those projects now, and over the next 20 years, it'll get paid off. So, 20 years from now, the council and the mayor aren't left holding the bag with like $5 million left on bonds. So, we're not overcharging. We know that there's going to be finance charges over the next 20 years. We're leaving enough money on the table so that we'll be able to pay it off. And 20 years from now, whoever the mayor and whoever the council is, isn't going to be cursing us.
There was just two questions brought up on that.
No, I'm glad you asked that. And I'm glad you asked that as a Councilwoman.
And the two specific projects are the downtown station and the expansion of the sportsplex and/or economic development in that area?
Yeah, projects related to. So, first off, let's look at the sportsplex expansion. The expansion of the sportsplex in itself will be $10 million plus a couple. Okay? I think right now, without even engineering costs or architecture work, it's right around $9 million right now. Okay? At the end of the day, that'll be over 10. And if we're saying we have about 25 over the next 20 years, 25 million if we spend now, $40 million over the next 20 years, that'll leave 15 million for finance charges. So, we're about $10 million per project right now. And if we're going to be $10 million on the sportsplex expansion alone, food and beverage could cover the whole thing, you know? So, we don't have to worry about economic development around that area. And the downtown Hammond train station, that'll be right around $10 million. So, we feel pretty confident there's not going to be much money left for the pavilion expansion, which I love that idea, but I think that that's a much bigger discussion. We're not going to be able to finance that on our own in Hammond. I think that we'd have to talk to other entities, or even a private entity, like Live Nation. Why wouldn't they want to be part of something like that? So, we're sort of mentally leaving that one on the table. I think the way the state looked at this was, what are Hammond's, what are Hammond's three largest generators of tourism? The sportsplex, the train, and the pavilion. So...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Question for you. I've received some phone calls regarding the food and beverage, the lingo, so to speak.
Sure.
I was really clear with the residents that this tax does not include groceries.
Thank you. I'm glad you asked that, Councilman. Exactly. You're exactly right. Let's go through a scenario. You go to Strack and Ventil and buy groceries. No, the food and beverage tax will not apply to that. However, you go to Strack and Ventil and you buy a sandwich at the deli, and you buy a bottle of water with the sandwich at the deli. I think the sandwich will have the 1% on it. The bottle of water will not. Maybe the bottle of water does as well, because if you're buying it in one transaction, right? But if you're going and you buy deli meat and you put it in your cart, no 1%. You take it up to the front. It's a finished product. You go to a sandwich shop and they make the sandwich for you, 1%. You go to Grubhub, 1%. McDonald's, Burger King, Taco Bell, 1%, 1%, 1%. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm glad you're asking these questions. We've gone through these scenarios. It's confusing, but it's the finished product we're talking about. Maryville recently got the ability to do this. Their council and the city chewed on it for a couple of months, and they ultimately passed it. But they were facing the same kind of thing we're facing. And I was just made aware today from the city controller, I'm not sure if she discussed this with you, that no matter what happens, if we pass it, we have 120 days where we have to wait for the Department of Revenue to get everything ready for the 1%. So, even if we did it right away, it would probably be 120 days before anything started happening. Any other questions? I'm sorry, this has gone on too long, but I'm just answering questions at this point. I'll be here for the debate, so thank you all.
Excuse me, Mayor. Each of the businesses that will be affected by the food and beverage tax will be notified, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's incumbent upon us.
Okay.
To notify them.
Okay.
So, we'll notify them. And we were discussing today how we want to do it in the city Hammond. But part of that 120-day period I was talking about earlier is the Department of Revenue ramping up their system as well, because they have to also get ready for that 1%. So, if you guys pass this, we still, for 120 days, are going to be in a period of time where it's sort of in limbo. Okay? And then we'll notify the local restaurants, and the State Department of Revenue will notify them as well. And then 120 days after that, I imagine it'll start.
Okay.
If it passes the council and signed by the mayor, of course. I'm not presuming anything.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, next up, distribution of scholarship awards.
Mr. President, thank you. I have Jody Kativa here, who is part of the Legacy Foundation, who's going to help with our distribution of scholarships. I will be announcing the names. I ask that the students that are receiving these scholarships, that when you go up to the microphone, that you tell us your name. Tell us, well, I'll probably go ahead and tell them the school that you're from, and tell us what school you're going to and what you plan on majoring in. Everybody got that? All righty, the first up, if you're here, Benjamin Aiden Aiken. He is from Morton High School.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Benjamin Aiden Aiken, graduated from Morton High School, and I will be attending Ivy Tech University for the next two years, majoring in construction management.
Good for you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Jody? Thank you. Next up, we have Kalisha Chavez. She's from Hammond Central.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Kalisha Chavez. I came from Hammond Central, like she said. And I will be attending to IUN, and I will be majoring in social work. So, yeah, thank you.
Awesome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next up, we have Adrian Flores from Hammond Central.
Good evening, guys. Graduated from Hammond Central High School, Adrian Flores, and I'll be attending PNW in the fall, and I'll be majoring in business management.
Congratulations.
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 Next up, Thomas Hack. Are you here? Okay. Caleb Kimbrough, are you here? Brianna Maddox from Hammond Central.
Hi, my name is Brianna Maddox. I'm from Hammond Central. I graduated on June 1st. I'll be going to Indiana State University, and I'll be majoring in music education with a concentration of instrumental and vocal.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next up, we have Ava Meadows from Morton. Doesn't matter.
Hi, I'm Ava Meadows. I graduated from Morton High School, and I will be going to IUN, right over there in Gary, and I'll be majoring in nursing. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next up, we have Jakira Nun from Morton.
Hi, my name is Jakira Nun. I graduated from Morton High School. I'll be attending Columbia College, and I'm going to major in photography.
Congratulations.
A woman after my own heart. Next up, Camilla Perez from Hammond Central.
Hello, my name's Camilla Perez. I graduated from Hammond Central. I will be attending the University of Illinois Chicago, and I'll be majoring in civil engineering.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next up, Skylar Pollard from Hammond Central.
Good evening. My name is Skylar Pollard. I graduated from Hammond Central, and I will be attending Fitz University, majoring in criminal justice and minoring in psychology. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next up, Mark Rodriguez from Morton. Nope. Okay. Next up, we have Camila Salgado from Hammond Central.
Good afternoon. My name's Camila Salgado. I graduated from Hammond Central High School. I will be attending Columbia College Chicago, and I will be, I'll be majoring in illustration. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next up, we have Marilyn Schuler. Is she present? Okay. Next up, we have Camilla Vargas from Hammond Central. Okay. And last one is Angela Valiegas from Morton.
Good evening. My name is Angela. I graduated from Morton High School. I will be attending Purdue Northwest University, and I will be majoring in criminology.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Each one of these students will be receiving a $1,000 scholarship from the council. So, we want to congratulate each one of you. Mr. President, I ask that we suspend a rule so that we can take a group picture.
Yeah, that shouldn't be.
That is a motion.
Second. Okay. Motion and second by Councilman Tyler. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? If all the, everybody that is here today got a word, we'd like to bring you up here and take a picture with you. Oh, I didn't do a roll call. Oh, my God. I'll just come on down.
You need to have a high.
Supreme Leader. They want you to see me up here. All right. Who is going to make sure he doesn't fall? And it won't be Colorado, that's for sure.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Any of you that are here just for that reason, if you'd like to leave at this time, feel free. We'll take a couple of minutes. Anybody else that's here that wants to speak for public comment, there's a list up there to sign your name. Now, it might be the time to do that if you plan to speak on public comment.
Mr. President? Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes.
I make a motion that we go back to regular business.
Second.
Been a motion and second to go back to regular order of business. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go back to regular order of business. Approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from the May 28, 2024 meeting and place them on file. Second.
For the motion and second by Councilman Spitali, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next up, register claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for approval of claims dated May 30th, 2024, and ending with claims dated May 30th, 2024. Claim number 4685 through form, claim number 4967 inclusive, in the amount of $2,276... I'm sorry. $2,761,996.58, I so move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kelwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes. Claims passes 9-0. Next up, public hearings. We have none today. Communications.
Mr. President.
Councilman.
We will be bringing out 24-13 ordinance.
This is just communications right now, Councilman. This isn't... This is just, yeah, that'll be under committee reports. We're on communications right now.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
I just want to thank the New Hope College Day Ministry for hosting their, I want to say, ninth annual College Day event, which was held yesterday at New Hope 2 for, sorry, 14th Annual College Day Event. So, for about 40 students who are either currently in college or about to go off to college, they put together packages of dorm room items, anything that they would need for school, and gave those to those children yesterday. So, thank you to Ms. Diane Hicks and the entire College Day Ministry of New Hope Baptist, Missionary Baptist Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I've got two items here I'd like to communicate to the public. The first being downtown Hammond is currently hosting every Monday in June, a Blues Cruise event. The Blues Cruise event is a car show that's from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. It's actually taking place today, right now, as we speak. I went last Monday, and it was well-attended. It was nice seeing people in the downtown Hammond area. About 150 people, 50 classic and custom cars showed up, and I believe it's only going to get bigger. So, if you have some time between 5:00 and 9:00 PM on Mondays in June, the cars are asking to enter and the public asking to enter around 489 Fayette Street. The second item that I have is, I want to say thank you to the volunteers that came out for our neighborhood cleanup. Our first cleanup took place this past Saturday. We cleaned up behind downtown Hammond Strack and Ventils. We went down Willow Court. We cleaned up from State Line all the way to the Holman Underpass, collected quite a bit of trash, and thanks to the Public Works Department for picking up them bags in a timely fashion. We have a second cleanup this Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00. We'll be cleaning up Hudson Street. From Cedar and Hudson, we'll be traveling eastbound towards Columbia, finishing under the Columbia Underpass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
We've, outside of our scholarship recipients, the class of 2024 graduated from all of our schools in the city of Hammond, and we just want to congratulate each and every one of them on their new chapters of their lives as they go on and do greater things. And hopefully, they'll come back and do even more things once they graduate from college.
Thank you. Just want to announce that the Live in the Ville last, not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, Friday and Saturday went very well. Saturday, we had rain, but we still wound up having a good crowd. Friday, the weather was perfect. It went really well, and right now, they're in discussion, possibly in September, having, having movie in Hessville Park. And that's our discussion that we're discussing right now. But there'll be more information coming. Any other communications? Yes, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to give a shout-out to the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. They came from Indianapolis to a Plasky Park Neighborhood Association meeting at the Hammond Mohawks to talk about their strategy for oversight of the cleanup of the contaminated property at 341st Street. They were very comprehensive about how they will go about that, and along with them, I want to thank State Rep. Carolyn Jackson. I want to thank State Rep. Carolyn Jackson for attending and being vocal about the cleanup there, as well as Lake County Commissioner Mike Rippe, Lake County Councilwoman Christine Sid, North Township Trustee Adrian Santos, and our friend Councilman-at-Large here, Dan Spitali, for their attendance and feedback during the meeting and support to make sure that this cleanup is done in a way that benefits the community and the local neighborhood. And we then have set out an invitation to the new property owner at 341st, the old Taylor Chain site, and that is Soria Properties out of Illinois. We've asked them to come to the next Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association meeting, and we're waiting for their response. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
We will be bringing out 24-13 as an ordinance.
2412 or 13?
2413.
Mr. President?
No, we'll be bringing out 2412.
Okay.
Yes, Councilman Tyler.
Never mind.
We'll bring out 2412 today. All right. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, I would like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch meetings. Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasantview Plaza will be tomorrow, 1:00 p.m. At their building on Kenwood, 940 Kenwood, at 1:00 p.m. East Hammond Pullman Crime Watch will meet June 18, 6:00 p.m. at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch is off for the summer because school is closed. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet next on July 2 at the VFW on Holman Avenue, across from Harrison Park, beginning at 6:00 p.m. The Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June 20, 6:00 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch is off for the summer because school is closed. South Hammond, South Holman Neighborhood Watch only meets twice a year. They just met in April, and they will meet again in October. So I will announce that when we get closer to the date. Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, June 13, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. Also, this year, the city of Hammond and the community and Crime Watch groups are offering a free ring doorbell for Hammond homeowner residents. You have to apply June 24 through June 28 only on the third floor of City Hall. You must own and reside in your Hammond home. You must provide proof of homeownership, and you must provide a valid driver's license or state ID. Quantities are limited, so I recommend that you fill out the application as soon as, as soon as they become available, which is June 24. This is an excellent tool for all of us residents to be the eyes and ears of our police department because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
The Capital Improvement Board met on June 3, 2024, and we dealt with the funding allocation for 171st Street Extension with the Lock Mueller Group in the amount of $72,700. We also dealt with the funding allocation for the 2024 2CCMG Columbia Avenue, 167th to Summer Street. United Consulting to the amount, in the amount of, for design, $62,500. We also dealt with the funding allocation for grant writing assistance in the amount of $100,000. We also dealt with funding allocation for the Holman Avenue Reconstruction Change Order, number 21, the Toll Theater Vaulted Sidewalk, in the amount of $32,400. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee report is closed. Next up, ordinance, third and final, third reading, final passage.
2412, an ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514. An ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as amended for property commonly known as 1424 Field Street, Hammond, Indiana, or 6320.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
I move for a third and final passage of ordinance 2412.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
As previously discussed, this is to adjust the zoning of a parcel of land located at 1424 Field Street. From my understanding, the business will use it as, I believe it was explained to us, as outside storage area as of right now, but it'll go from R-1U Urban Single Family Residential District and I-2 Manufacturing District to just I-2 Manufacturing District. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. 2412 passes nine zero. And that brings us to number 11, Introduction of Ordinances.
2413, an ordinance of the city of Hammond adopting a 1% municipal food and beverage tax.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for first and second reading of 2413, referred to council as a whole on June 24 at 4:45 p.m. Per the statute, we must have a separate public hearing that will be held here in the chambers on June 24, beginning at 5:00 p.m. I so move.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Like the mayor said during his speech, and we discussed in caucus, this is only possible because of state legislation. It is for a 1% municipal food and beverage tax. That's on, I guess you'd say, service foods where you go to a restaurant, bar, whatever. Also, it was brought up about, well, you start at 1%, you can make it two. We can't do that by state legislation that's specific to the three projects the mayor mentioned, which are the Sportsplex, the train station downtown, and the pavilion. And it sunsets after 20 years.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. 2413 passes on first and second reading, nine zero. That's all we have for Introduction of Ordinances. Next up, Resolutions.
24R-09, a resolution of the Hammond City Council approving certain January 1, 2024 assessment date forms CF1s as timely filed with the Hammond Common Council of the city of Hammond as a designating body of applicants previously approved for economic revitalization area deductions of assessed valuation pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Tyler.
I move for passage of Resolution 24R-9.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Warple. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
This resolution is to receive and approve the CFA1 forms, CF-1 forms, excuse me, for the businesses that have received some type of economic development agreement with us. There are seven businesses that are submitting their CFA1 forms, which means 100% compliance this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. 24R9 passes nine zero.
24R-10, a declaratory resolution determining that a certain area of the city of Hammond, Indiana, be designated as the Swanell Economic Revitalization Area to which deductions from assessed valuation may be requested by an applicant to the Common Council of the city of Hammond, Indiana pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
I move for a final passage of Resolution 24R-10.
Second.
The motion is second by Councilman Salinas. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
As this resolution reads, it is to establish an economic revitalization area for Swanell, who is looking to get an assessed value of their land, potentially to enter into an economic development agreement with the city of Hammond to support the expansion of their current property in the amount of around $7 million. This will include the creation of another five to 10 jobs. They currently employ 42 people, and they've been at that location in Hammond for, since 1947, I believe. With this agreement, we will also ask for a public hearing on June 24, 2024 in advance of any additional resolutions connected to this agreement. Thank you.
And that'll be at our regular meeting, too.
Correct.
Any other discussion on 24R10? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander?
Yes.
Spitali?
Yes.
Vines?
Yes.
Kelwinski?
Yes.
Salinas?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Warple?
Yes.
Rakos?
Yes. 24R10 passes 10-0. Next up, new and unfinished business. Our intent to consider goes away because we did ask that today. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman.
From my understanding, there is a student here who is doing a report on the Hammond City Council and what he witnesses here at the meeting tonight, so just want to acknowledge Mr. Cameron Walker. If it appeases, the rest of the city council would love for him to come to the microphone and just share a little bit more about the project that he's working on.
Sure. You want to suspend the rules?
We don't need to.
Okay.
Or we can just move to public expression and let him speak first.
Hello, everyone. My name is Cameron Dane Walker. I am a student of Munster High School doing a little project, you could say, for my US government class for summer school that I am taking. Really came here today to really gain upon information that you guys are talking about, to refer it back to my essay I'm going to write, and really using key vocab words and like topics that we're learning about in government, applying it to what you guys are talking about today. So, yep, that's what I would like to say today.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us and observing us. I hope we were okay.
Mr. President, I should make the connection that Cameron's family is, although he attends Munster High School, he's a Hammond resident, his family are longtime Hammond residents. He's the grandson of Mr. Paul Walker.
Paul Walker?
Yep.
No. It's a nephew.
Sorry, grand nephew.
Yes.
Sure, yes.
Grand nephew, huh?
Grand nephew. Also, with attending Munster High School, I also attended the Area Career Center of Hammond, Indiana, doing my role of electrical engineering there, hopefully pursuing the career of an electrician coming out of high school, hopefully December by early graduation, with honor society also, maybe finding an apprenticeship. Maybe around here, I know a place in Indiana called Otto Kennison that I might be looking towards also, or maybe a place in Illinois, I don't know, but just wanted to add on that I am a student of also Hammond schools. Yep, thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Or public speaking. You did a great job up there. Fantastic job.
Okay, any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Next up, public expression. First up, George Stoya.
George Stoya, Robertsdale. Yeah, I was hoping for a little more clarification on that Swanell Economic Revitalization area, specifically with respect to what does the terms deductions from assessed value? Are we talking abatements? Are we talking just flat-out deductions on an annual basis? If we could get a little more context on that, it would be nice as to, I know there was an index of properties that were read off during the caucus that were coming out of, I thought it was abatement status, maybe I misheard. But I, you know, I know the city has to incentivize our commercial people and stuff like that, but are we being too generous, I wonder sometimes? And because it means, you know, these people are here to, they're making money. For example, it said that the guy, the company employs 42 people. Yeah, do they live in Hammond? I mean, I know I'm starting to sound like Bob Margavish, but do they? Are they spending money in Hammond? I mean, you know, it's nice, but that money isn't being spent here. I mean, we're giving them all these breaks. I mean, I know, I know it's, it's a conflicted area. I'm not trying to say it big and easy. I just wish we had more context. Thanks.
Thanks, George. Next up, Angela Vallegas. Did I say it right?
She signed it up by accident. I think she signed by accident.
Camila Salgado.
Same thing.
Same thing?
Mm-hmm.
Adrian Flores?
Same thing.
Okay. Carlotta Blake Keane. Thank you. Teresa Torres? Teresa Torres.
First, I want to see if this microphone is working because I couldn't hear anybody back there, so.
It's working.
Okay. Can you hear me, Brianna? Okay, cool. So I'm a longtime citizen of Lake County, director of an agency with offices at four-thirty-eight Fayette Street here in Hammond. Years ago, I spent many hours in this room fighting for public transportation. Some of your faces are very familiar, so I'm sure you may remember me as I do you. Today, I want to speak about human dignity as guaranteed by federal law in nineteen ninety. I'm going to ask you to truly listen so that you might actually understand. Back then, I was asked, what's the big deal? It's really important that you understand what the big deal is. Mayor McDermott, who I'm sorry he had to leave, once told me that Hammond is one of the most accessible cities in Lake County. Now, I'm not sure how he made that determination, but I can tell you that the people living in the senior citizen, in the senior housing, still can't make it to our offices or to downtown Hammond safely. And if you're a wheelchair user and you live in Hammond, it's impossible to find a house or an apartment. It's been years since I've been here. The only thing new is some technology and some cool carpet, but you still don't have integrated seating. You still don't have an audio leaf for people who are deaf. The greatest barrier that people with disabilities face in this city and people with disabilities are everybody. They're your family, your neighbor, all ages, all races, rich, poor, everything. It's people, period. And one of the greatest barriers that they face in Hammond is something far more pervasive than physical access. It's the easiest thing in the world to get rid of if people are just interested in trying, and it's pervasive ignorance. Everybody knows what the ADA is. When Congress passed the ADA, the Americans with Disabilities Act, thirty-five years ago, they said, well, you know, census shows there's X number of people with disabilities. Having a physical or mental disability should in no way diminish a person's right to fully participate in all aspects of society. Historically, they said, society tends to isolate and segregate individuals with disabilities. Discrimination continues to be a serious and pervasive problem. One of the ways that they identified is there's discrimination, including intentional exclusion, failure to make modifications such as accessible bathrooms in your city hall, integrated seating in your city hall. And they also referenced overprotective rules and exclusion. As some of my colleagues will explain, because I don't have time, saw this really cute little poster with persons, apostrophe S, by the way, shouldn't be, with Disabilities Day. It's two hours set aside at Wolf Lake so that persons with disabilities can have a goodie bag. I'm going to let the other folks tell you about it a little bit, but the reason that I was curious about it, is that my buzzer, because I can't hear very well?
Yes, it was.
I'm happy to stop.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, but other folks will give you a little more detail. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Sorry.
Raymond Fletcher?
Good afternoon, members of the council. In case some of y'all may forget who I am, I am Raymond Fletcher. I am the one that some have referred to as that expletive Fletcher. I'm watching Hammond City Council because even though I no longer live here, I had to move thirty-six years ago because of actions by this council and your predecessors, having to ride my wheelchair in the snow and the rain just to get to work. But those of you that still sit on this council, y'all really didn't give a damn, did you? You allowed it to happen. You allowed the many, many, many Americans, many citizens, many of the people that you all watched grow up, have to leave because you robbed us of our opportunities. Thirty-six years I have lived in this community. I grew, I cried and I laughed with my friends. And I had to move from my mother, from everything I've known, I had to leave. And the last eleven years I've been living in Las Vegas, Nevada, and I've never had more success in my entire life. I call the woman that leads our city, Carolyn Goodman, a dear friend, who never stepped on me, who never neglected to include all persons with disabilities. I didn't get shoved in a corner when I was running for city council. I got welcomed to the diets like everyone else because I am an equal. I watch as three of our elementary schools are closing. Our debtors are not being successful at South Bend, Fort Wayne, billions of dollars. We hear about the Horseshoe Casino. You know what? I know Anthony Carano, the president and CEO of Caesar's. He's got a family legacy from El Dorado saying, treat every death and team member like family. You can guarantee, you can guarantee that I'm going to tell him what my life has been like in Hammond, Indiana. And y'all want anything from Horseshoe Casino, long as I got a breath in my body, I'd be damned if you do. Let me conclude with this. My greatest moment did not come from my greatest moment. My greatest moment came from my greatest defeat because it was during my defeat that they found a way to get up. Y'all thought for one moment, y'all broke me, y'all got it twisted. I'm back.
Thank you, Raymond. Brianna Totinos?
Hello, yes. I will continue on about the Disability Day that was mentioned previously. As a disabled member of the community, I've attended a few festivals and seeing something labeled as a Disability Day at first seems like something exciting. Maybe it's an event for me. But the more that you look, the more that the alarm bells really start ringing. This day only lasts for two hours. It runs before the festival is open to the public and the link on the website leads to a map of a single pavilion. I didn't understand what that exactly meant for me, so when I called the Civic Center, I had one of what I would probably consider the most condescending phone calls of my entire life. And having worked retail for ten years, that was quite an accomplishment. The woman's explanation, when I asked about Disability Day, focused on children going to the festival, riding some of the rides, but as she very clearly noted, not all of the rides, and then getting a snack. When I explained that I was a disabled adult, I was told that I could come too in order to assist any special persons or that someone could come along with me in order to assist me. I explained I have no children, I do not need assistance, I just want to understand this event. She told me she didn't know my disability, was not obliged to ask about it, and my participation was up to the event organizer of the day, but they probably wouldn't kick me out. The event was just so that I would not be bumped into or stared at. An honorable mention for the most offensive part of this phone call might be her calling me sweetheart and hun after every sentence, but only after I identified as having a disability. Disability Day is a simultaneous exclusion and lumping together of a major part of your population, and it is extremely problematic. You want to seem inclusive and give back, so you'll hold an event for the people who are treated like second-class members of your community, but only before the park is opened, so the public doesn't actually have to stare at those poor special needs children. Your event is only held for two hours. The last that I checked, a full calendar day usually lasts a little longer than that. Not to mention, it starts at a time that is totally inaccessible to a larger portion of the disabled community you claim to want to include, when you consider how long it would take someone to get ready and make it to an event and then also gather up their things and leave the event. Because don't forget, towing of vehicles immediately begins at twelve P.M. so that it can be ensured all of your disabled folks don't interact with all of your normal folks. Overall, the event is catered towards a very specific disability accommodation as well, so much so that calling it Disability Day in generality is a lie. Where you could have focused on education and inclusion, you instead chose ignorance and exclusion. We have been told that this is a gift to us. After all, you have an autistic son or cousin or great uncle, five times removed, and they love Disability Day. The disabled people in your community don't need a day to get a cute balloon and a goodie bag and a snack or an incentive for people not to stare at us. I don't need a day. Every day is Disability Day for myself and many others, and your sorry attempt at including us has just left us feeling even more isolated and excluded. Thank you.
Thank you. Jordan Musenbrock?
Hello. I didn't prepare anything. I just want to say I live a very full life despite what some people may think by looking at me. I feel that we have to do better. That's all we want. At this point, I don't know why or whose idea it was to put on Persons with Disability Day in the first place. I would like to have a conversation with that person. Maybe that's where it can start. I think it's a little past that, as it seems that this isn't, as I've been told, that this maybe isn't the first Persons with Disability Day. However, I would like to know, talk to that person. It doesn't need to happen if everyone's just included. There's no need for this day. Like my colleague said, every day is Disability Day for people with disabilities. We're just people. So with that being said, if society would just stop lumping us all together, people with disabilities, people with autism, people with, and wheelchairs, people. We're just people. It angers me to see. It just angers me to see something. I feel like we're being exploited in a way to say, to, oh, how can we? How can we make this event and even, what can we do at our event? That's how Persons with Disability Day, I don't know. It just doesn't seem right and I'm upset about it, obviously. I came all the way here. I live in Michigan City and I'm all the way here to tell you how I feel. So that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Jordan. Next up, Ken Rosick.
Good evening, council. I don't really have anything prepared today myself either, but I'm going to continue trying to save the Briar East Woods. One of the things that really bothered me is the misinformation that gets passed along by this, by this government. Okay, by the Common Council, some members of the Common Council, by the administration. I heard the mayor said that only two hundred trees are being taken down for Governor's Parkway. Well, we decided to count the trees. We are about a third of the way and we're already over eight hundred. So where these numbers are coming from, I have no idea. Dean Button said in a question at mayor's night out, how much would an underpass cost? He blurted out thirty million dollars. That had no basis whatsoever. Where he came up with that, it seemed like it came out of thin air. We have cited to you an underpass that was built in West Lafayette for twelve million dollars. That is twice the size of the one that would be required on Grand Avenue that would service all of the residents. Why are people saying these things to us, to our public? Be honest. We had a councilman on Facebook recently saying the federal government, it doesn't matter what they think about this project. And he was referring to, he was responding to a person who doesn't even live in the city. And we just found out that what's blocking this project right now is the federal government. We were asked by the Federal Waya Way administration to do a bullet point presentation. It ended up being thirteen pages long, and it was about all of the inconsistencies, misinformation and misdirection on the merits of this project that was sold to us, to the residents, by members of this common council putting out misinformation and this administration. Well, they're holding you up now, and I don't know if it was because of this thirteen-page list and discrepancies of all the information that went in. I don't know why people have to just, you know, tell us the truth and then sell us the project. Don't make things up or diminish things. This is going to destroy the last natural space in Hesta. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next up, T.J. Gertig. Just give it to them. Give it to them.
How's it going, everyone? I did come prepared today.
Thank you.
I prepared a trail guide for you all of Briar East Woods, and inside you will also find a sticker that someone made for us. They have a sticker machine, and so you guys can stick this on your folders or your briefcases, and there's a QR code that you can scan if you ever want to visit our website and check out any updates or to contact us. But I want to turn your attention to the, so front page, I think it turned out pretty nice. There you go. And then on the inner flap right here, it gives you a little brief description of the area about the historical importance of it. It's a forty-seven-hundred-year-old dune, Briar East Woods, an ancient shoreline of Lake Michigan. It's a black oak savanna that has become a forest, but it could be restored to its initial ways, and just some of the animals and trees that you can find there. And if you open it up, you see all the trails that your residents have carved through there over the years. These aren't trails that you would have to make. These are trails that exist in your city through these woods, and you can walk them. I had to run through there with a GPS tracker to map them all, but I think it'll pay off. So this is not, you know, a picture of what your city could be, what Hammond could be. This is a picture of what Hammond is right now. And you guys have the choice to keep it that way or to change it, make it something different. You could destroy the woods and build Governor's Parkway and a subdivision ultimately. We all know. Governor's Parkway does nothing to solve the problems that it addresses. It's more expensive. It makes flooding worse. It makes Hammond more car-dependent and less accessible. It doesn't help kids walk to school. It hinders emergency response time. And so if you want to help us save these woods, you can flip onto the backside here. There's a QR code for you. There's Ann. They're in the cleanup. And we hope you guys join us. Please talk to me after this meeting if I've missed something or if I'm off the mark on anything. Thank you. Oh, and we'll have these available for anyone else that wants to grab them. Please come hang out with us.
Thank you, T.J. A motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Been a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?